Agenda review session for Wednesday, December 30th, 2015. Ordinances on second reading, 503. Orders to amend and supplement to revise general orders of the City of New Brunswick, Title 10, Vehicles and Traffic. Ament two schedules in the city ordinances. Section 10, 1620. Schedule 24, no parking at any time. Section 10, 1630. Schedule 26, no parking at certain hours. Section 10, 2830. Schedule 41, designation of permit parking pass. Resolutions, 578, approved agenda amendments. 579, paywall. 580, authorized refund to redeem tax sales certificates. 581, approved agreement reasons of 60,000 of CDVG funds to intersect funds. Persistence to microenterprises, fair and open. 582, approved amendment resolution R. 071-522. Reason additional funds with 25,000 administration fees with EMTA healthcare, additional and POS contract. Term July 15, 2015 to June 30, 2016. Amount 144, 798, 43. 583, approved award contract with PrimePoint LLC for 2016 municipal payroll services. 12-month period commencing January 1st, 2016, and ending December 31st, 2016, which can be extended on a yearly basis for up to two additional years. Specification number 470, 16 RFP, not to exceed 50,000, fair and open. 584, approved amendment resolution R. 111-426. Change order number one, Allied Construction Group Incorporated for DNR Canal West and the New Pump Stations Upgrade. Specification number 245, 12WR. Amount 69,895,7. Approval of this change order will not constitute an increase of 20% or more of the original contract. 585, approved resolution authorizing budget transfer, 2015 municipal budget. 586, approved resolution canceling various general capital improvement authorizations. 587, approved resolution to repay requested by Division of Taxation, Taxation Center Computer Program, technical support and associated printing, binding and mailing services. Lead specification number 486, 16 RFP. 588, approved resolution authorizing CME associate as engineering consultant. Pursuant to New Brunswick, I have a cost as more than construction corporation not to exceed 15,000. 589, approved amendment resolution R. 121-553. Reasoning change amount to 69,000, 58320. Proven payment for emergency procurement, warning till we prepare for 30th Royal Waterline Louis Street to Hamilton Street. B of W Construction in New Jersey not to exceed 69, 58320. Purpose order number D. 83313. 590, approved amendment resolution R. 111-512. Pay additional amount of 3,000, 68216. Pay balances owed on various projects for the warning till we senior center of the private property with Sal Electric Co. Incorporated for electrical maintenance and repair services. Specification of 415-14PR not to exceed 3,000, 68216. Approval of this change order will constitute an increase of 20% or more of the original contract. 591, authorized purchase by police department under state contract A, 89980/M0483. NASCO Value Point Computer from Wireless Electronics Incorporated for one Panasonic M1 tablet accessories not to exceed 4,000, 88422. 592, approved award contract with Jobman Contracts Incorporated for 2015 sanitary sewer approval project, Phase 2A. Specification number 895-15 not to exceed 1,00532,20. 593, approved award contract with Fall State Power Back Incorporated for 2015 sanitary sewer approval project, Phase 2B. Specification number 895, 15 not to exceed 302, 191. 594, approved request for solicitation of funds requested by Rutgers University Dance Marathon, Dance Marathon, the Benedict and Brace Kids Foundation. Dates of February 12, 13, 14, 19, 20, 21, 2016, March 4, 5, 6, 25, 26, 27, 2016. Time is 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Locations of Georgia Albany Streets, Eastern Avenue, Somerset Street, Georgia Barrett Street, Georgia Church Streets, Eastern Avenue, Hampton Street, Rogers Lane, Dudley Road, George Street Commercial Avenue, George Street Nickel Avenue, and Eastern Avenue and Landing Lane. 595, authorized tax code for transfer of overpayments on several tax and utility accounts. 596, resolution authorizing mayor and city clerk correction agreement between the county and Middlesex, the New Brunswick Cultural Center Incorporated and the City of New Brunswick for grant provided by the county of Middlesex for development of new theater as part of New Brunswick Cultural Center.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Escobar?
Here.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Here.
Councilmember Barlati?
Present.
Council President Egan?
Here. Please be advised that the notice requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act have been complied with and satisfied and that the annual notice, sufficient notice of timely place and conduct of all public reason in municipal council of the City of New Brunswick has been filed with the city clerk, has been placed on an appropriate bulletin board in the lobby of City Hall in New Brunswick, New Jersey, and has been transferred to the official newspaper of the City of New Brunswick, namely the Home News Tribune. Please stand for the committee.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a routine and justice for all.
We'll have a moment of silence for our men and women serving in our armed forces, especially during holiday time, and we'll also have a moment of silence for all our men and women who have lost their lives in battle. We have minutes from December 2nd, 2015. Second motion on the minutes?
So moved.
Second. Hold call.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Barlati?
Aye.
Council President Egan?
Yes. We do not have any public hearings tonight, correct me, Mr. City Clerk?
No, correctly.
So we have ordinance on second reading, 503. Ordinance to amend and supplement to revise general orders of the City of New Brunswick, Title 10, Vehicles and Traffic. Ament two schedules in the city ordinances. Section 10, 1620. Schedule 24, no parking at any time. Section 10, 1630. Schedule 26, no parking at certain hours. Section 10, 2830. Schedule 41, designation of permit parking areas. Would anybody from the public like to comment on these particular ordinance? Yes, sir.
Good evening, members of the council. Charles Cradell from Brunswick. If I could just start by asking why the location of this hearing has been changed at the last minute?
The location's been changed because of there was a roof leaking at the city hall.
And can you tell me in general, summarize what this ordinance does? I see it's about Bishop Street near the new construction.
Mr. Valenti, please.
Please, the council, yes. As a result of the Middlesex Bike Way Project in New Brunswick, Bishop Street is inclusive in that, and now there's two directional bike lanes on Bishop. Became necessary to eliminate the parking in the northbound, northerly direction, but in order to compensate for that part of Bishop Street had metered spots. Those meters will be removed and the entire west side of the street will be permit parking.
Okay, so there'll be a net loss of parking, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Is it known how many spaces will be lost?
Approximately 15.
15 spaces, and those are presently metered spaces, or?
These are resident parking spaces.
Okay, so that's probably about half or more?
It's less than half.
Less than half, okay.
I think that's all. Thank you. Anybody else on the ordinance? Seeing nobody?
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Barlati?
Aye.
Council President Egan?
Yes. We have resolutions from 578 to 596. Would anybody from the public like to comment on any of the particular resolutions this evening? Anybody at all, step right up.
Charles Cradell. Hello, once again, Charles Cradell of New Brunswick. I think the only one I really want to ask you about is the final one. Your project right around the corner from here, what can you tell me about this?
Well, I know is that it's at the very preliminary stages of gathering information and funds to do the project, but it's pretty much a new downtown cultural center in the City of New Brunswick from the side of the State Theater down to right at the end of the Crossroads Theater would be, that would be the area of where the new cultural center is going to be, from my understanding.
Is there a plan for, you know, having a space for those theaters that are going to be demolished?
Absolutely.
I don't know, like I said, I just, I heard a little bit of the plan.
Definitely brand-new George Street Playhouse, definitely all those, maybe incorporated in the plan in the cultural center from my preliminary understanding of the project, but that's really, I don't know too much about it. That's pretty much the summary of a...
Mr. Egan, I could help you a little bit.
Sure.
I understand it's a 399-seated theater that is proposed for that area, and it will encompass both the existing George Street Playhouse and the Crossroads Theater.
Yeah. And then be merged into one.
Correct.
You all be one cultural center built.
And how's that going to work? Because don't, isn't the theater season, you know, run the same, don't those theaters both run at the same times? Aren't they presently using, wouldn't that be a...
I can't, I don't know that for sure, but I believe it's, we're talking, we're definitely, we're going to have to have it all work together. I mean, how's it going to work? I can't, I can't give you that answer. I don't know if anybody else has the answer, but I'm sure that the people who run the theater have sat down and there's, like I said, this is all preliminary stages. This is all part of a new downtown cultural center in the City of New Brunswick. Like I said, there's no, I have not seen any drawings or anything like that, but it's just all talk of what's going on or proposed and what to happen.
And the resolution, if I can, Mr. Council President, provides for the city to be involved with this grant that is coming from the County Cultural Arts Trust Fund to the entity that runs the cultural, and it's a $6 million grant that's going to be held in trust for this particular project.
Okay, so $6 million from the county, are there any other funding sources?
I know, I know there's trying to, maybe at the state level, they're trying, I'm sure they're trying to pay some funds through the, through the tax, the EBA or something like that, I'm sure.
Okay. Can you tell me, is there an expected date for the construction to start?
I don't have any of those answers.
Okay. Is there a plan for what to do while the building is being built for the current theaters? Because you say they're going to have a brand-new theater, but construction might...
I'm going to say I'm sure it's going to be, but I don't know of any at the moment.
Okay. What makes you sure that there's going to be a plan?
Well, because I would hope that there would be. Number one, I wouldn't want to see the whole thing get shut down, so maybe we'll use some of the state theater. I don't know what's, like I said, I've not been part of many of the discussions as far as what they're going to do in that, in those stages, but once we learn more, we'll give you more detail.
Okay, but for now, we're getting $6 million from the county to tear down the two theaters.
To start for the project, yes.
Right, the first thing would be to tear down two theaters.
Well, the first thing I think would be to get something on paper, is take a look at the plan and everything, you know, and make sure it's all feasible, make sure all the engineering studies are done correctly. I'm sure we don't know, once we knock it down, what the soil is like there, if there's any contaminated soil, there's a lot of steps to the whole project. You know, I think it's a great thing for the City of New Brunswick. This project's a home run. I mean, we, we wanted to have this, you know, we recognize the Crossroads Theater, George Street Playhouse, people come into New Brunswick all the time, we go to these venues, and if we can make it better and more up-to-date, and who the people who are running the theater want this, the surrounding people and the boards that are up there, the people that represent the various places, I think it's a win-win situation. So I hope that it comes to fruition, but like I said, it's in the very preliminary stages.
And the project is more than just a theater, stays correct? There will also be other components. Can you tell me about what else will be on the site?
I don't know, I'm pretty sure there's either office space or apartment buildings on the town. Mixed-use type of building.
Okay, so residential, and will there also be parking, or?
I would hope so, but maybe they, maybe they think, I'm sure once all the studies are out, you know, you're asking a lot of questions, like I keep saying I don't know, but I don't know. But I don't know if the studies are done, if there's enough parking across the street or on the corner, there's a couple of various parking tents there, so I don't know, I can't give you that answer.
Okay.
Once we take a look at the plans, we'll see if it has parking in there and all those other things. No, no public set of drawings is available that I know of.
Okay, I'll just, I'll just make my comment simple then, that I think this is somewhat putting the cart before the horse, and you know, it's nice that you have confidence that everything will work out fine, but you know, we need to...
You've got to start somewhere, start somewhere. First, you do any kind of construction, you have to say, you know, do we have the money to do this? And if we don't have the money to do this, how can we smartly and, you know, responsibly get money to obtain to do the project? That's what we're trying to do here. So I don't understand how, we've got to start somewhere, and this is the right way to start.
Okay, have you started, have you started out by picking a developer? Is there a developer that would be responsible for this?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
No? Okay, well, I, I think nevertheless, there's a lot of unanswered questions about this project, and it's something I'd like to hear about in the future.
Well, as it comes together more, all the questions will be answered, but like I said, it's just...
I can't wait to hear the answers, and I hope it'll be something to talk about at your meetings, and if the mayor doesn't state in the city address that he talks about it too.
Okay, I'm sure, I'm sure he will, he should be proud of it if it happens.
Okay, and then I did see one thing I have to add, that was 592 is $1.5 million for sanitary sewer improvements. Where is this?
Is this Rutgers Village?
No.
I'm sorry, this is not...
Please, the council, I can answer that. Actually, for the past years, the Engineering Department has conducted a citywide hammering of all this sanitary sewer system in the city. We have identified locations that require either replacement, refurbishment, repair, or in some cases, reline. So both Phase 2A and 2B, which are specific to today's resolutions, deal with the repairs and upgrades to the existing sanitary system. Parts of the system are in excess of 100 years old, so it needs to be done. It's just a, something, it's a function of providing services to the city.
Thank you. Anybody else on the resolutions this evening? Anybody else? Seeing nobody?
Move the resolutions.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Barlati?
Aye.
Council President Egan?
Yes. We'll now move to the public portion of the meeting. If anybody from the public wishes to address the council, please step up. You have five minutes to address the council. Good evening, yes.
Good evening, once again, Charles Cradell of New Brunswick. I'll get right to the point. At the last meeting, there were a lot of people who were outraged about the way a person was handled by the police. Just the very next week came out that African-Americans are way more likely to be arrested on low-level offenses in New Brunswick. This is straight from the ACLU, they did a study in four different cities, including New Brunswick. Study went back 10 years and found that, you know, black people are 2.6 times more likely to get arrested for low-level offenses in New Brunswick. Does the city council have anything to say about that? Does the community liaison have anything to say about that?
I don't have any comment personally on it at this time, Mr. Cradell.
Does anybody wish to comment?
I noticed the community liaison has a copy of it. Can she speak to it?
A copy of what, Mr. Cradell?
The report, the question, I just saw it, she has it.
She wants to tell you she has a copy of it, assuming she's read it, I don't know. What is your question, sir?
What is your response to the report?
It's a 106-page report, I, when I got the report, I did review it. I spoke with, with Police Director Caputo about the report, and you know, this, this report was prepared using the Oprah request of Linda Garcia from the ACLU, and it encompasses the time period between 2008 and 2012. And some of the things I wanted to point out, should it be brought up, is that in 2013, the New Brunswick Police Department became an accredited department, which means that we use the best practices in law enforcement. And the report sort of focuses on quality of life issues, such as litter, graffiti, public urination, and low-level offenses. And the City of New Brunswick, the Police Department, we have direct involvement with our community centers. We have crime watch groups, neighborhood block organizations, of which I attend those as well, and you know, the school system, New Brunswick addresses the issues which impact the quality of life of our citizens. And our goal is, is to, is to strive to improve the quality of life issues which, if left unattended, will tarnish and corrode the good neighborhoods. So some of the other things that the New Brunswick Police Department has done, which I wanted to point out, was sensitivity training. In 2005, every sworn officer in New Brunswick has participated in sensitivity of training, and I'm sure you probably already know that, which includes community awareness and racial profiling instructions. Those kinds of trainings include eradicating racial profiling, de-escalating training, diffusing the situation, officer awareness, diversity, ethics, community awareness training, law enforcement awareness, cultural awareness training, and responding to persons and special needs. And we also focus on anti-discrimination and bias-based profiling. So when you look at the report, as I said, it just focuses on 2008 to 2012, and it also includes a community in Millville. I don't even know why that would have been included and compared with New Brunswick when the communities are so different. Millville is in, I believe it's in Cumberland County, and the communities that this report focuses on is Elizabeth, which is similar to New Brunswick, it's an urban area, in New Brunswick, and I think the other was, correct me if I'm wrong, Jersey City maybe, which are all urban areas, and it's sort of, when you compare those with Millville, you kind of get a little skewed result. But I do have the report, if you'd like to talk to me about it, I'm more than happy to, to speak to you about it in more detail.
Thank you very much for that, and I wanted to just say that that's exactly the type of discussion that we should be having in public, and I shouldn't have to ask these questions for this to be brought up at a council meeting. This is a serious issue, and for anybody who was at the prior council meeting, you know just how serious it is. I also need to ask why the police department did not apply for state funding to get body worn cameras? The state, you know, the AG's office just gave out, 176 different departments got body worn cameras. Why didn't we apply if the police want them?
Captain?
Police Department definitely wants the cameras, both the administration and the membership are totally in favor of it. The monies that were available in that grant cycle that came down from the AG's office through the county wasn't enough to fund what we want to do here in the police department. We want to do this right instead of fast. The money is a small portion, they were offering $500 to pay for the camera itself. The cameras plus almost between $800 and $1,000 for the models that will be compatible with the cameras we have in our cars now, and the grant doesn't cover any of the backend stuff, the IT, the software, which we needed for reduction of juveniles, domestic violence victims, and there's a whole slew of other stuff that affects the privacy issues of how the cameras are being worn. We're excited to watch the few towns that did get it in the county, to see how they respond to these issues that were brought up. The New Jersey State Chiefs Association has addressed the Attorney General with some concerns, specifically about privacy and public disclosure, and again, we want to do this right instead of doing it fast. There has been talk of possibly another round of grant money coming around. We're definitely going to take a look at that as well. We did look at this grant, it just wasn't going to work for us right now, the money available wasn't going to be able to put a system in place that we need here in New Brunswick.
Thank you, Captain. Thank you. I want to ask about the 732 Lounge, is that going to be, their license is going to be suspended at some point next month? Is that still set to happen?
Mr. Chairman?
Still set to happen. I believe it starts on January 6th. I don't have paperwork right in front of me, but yes, there'll be a suspension in January for a period, 20 days, I think it was. But yeah, that's still put in place, whatever I told you before is still going to happen.
Okay. I wanted to ask about the tavern reports. Why is it that the tavern reports focus so heavily on the bars in the second ward, and a place like 732 Lounge is not even included?
I don't prepare the tavern reports, the police department, the Special Investigations Unit does, but from my understanding is it's all generated by calls for service. So more calls for service, the more you're going to hear about a particular licensed establishment in the report. But I think the last report did have a chapter, if you will, on the lounge 732. We've been doing quarterly reports now so that we can keep prized of what's going on at the licensed establishments, and that's been in place for about two years now. So every quarter, we get a report as to the activity in and about the licensed premises. But certainly establishments that don't have any activity or little to no calls for service don't make the report, so to speak. It's not done by wards of district.
Okay. Understood. I asked at the last meeting if it's true that an officer on the New Brunswick Police Department had been suspended for 30 days. Is that true? If so, who was the officer?
Captain?
Reserve Officer Cradell?
There wasn't also suspended for 30 days. As we've discussed, I don't release the details. Everything that's on the city's website under Internal Affairs is what were required to be released by Attorney General guidelines. It's a personnel issue, I don't know if it's a name, or I believe it says on the website it was for conduct unbecoming, I believe. Maybe that's the way the details were to be released.
Thank you, Captain.
Just like to reiterate that this shows Internal Affairs is not holding people accountable. Someone did something that caused them to be suspended for 30 days without paying, and they are anonymous. The system doesn't tell us who did it, and it only tells us that they did conduct unbecoming, which is a very vague thing. So if you needed any more proof that Internal Affairs doesn't work, there it is.
Well, how does it work? The guy got suspended for 30 days. He got punished. You just want more, you just want more details of the punishment.
I think the public's entitled to know.
At the end of the day, Internal, hold on, I'm speaking. At the end of the day, Internal Affairs reprimanded the guy. Am I correct, Captain?
Yes.
Okay, so hold on, so they, they reprimanded him. You just want more details, and by the Internal General Guidelines, they're only, what they give you is what they're supposed to give you. You just want more.
I'm saying it's not good enough.
You just want more.
I'm saying it's not good enough, and I'm saying anybody who went to the last council meeting should know that. This is, this is not acceptable.
It's your view, it's your, okay, Mr. Cradell. In the spirit of Happy New Year.
Can you tell me, did the captain make any progress investigating Officer Liz Jack?
Captain, Officer Liz Jack?
Yes, I actually, I'm going to prepare a report for the council, and I'll forward a copy to Mr. Cradell next week. But I can just, in real quick summary, the missing or misplaced ticket did not fall under the fault of Officer Liz Jack, he properly got it to the court. It appears that the courts on how misplaced the ticket, we're still working with them to find out how that happened, but Officer Liz Jack had no wrongdoing at all in the whole situation.
Thank you, Captain.
Thank you. Can I ask, I know a couple of Edison police officers got letters sent to, I guess their, you know, their bosses, saying that the county prosecutor no longer found those officers to be credible, and that, you know, they wouldn't, they'd have to throw out any prosecution that relied upon their testimony. Can you tell me, has that happened to any New Brunswick officers? Has the city been made aware of any officers who the county prosecutor wouldn't find credible?
I don't know anything about that. Captain?
I don't know anything specifically. I could look into it for next week's meeting for sure, but I don't know anything.
Thank you, I would appreciate that. Is there an update on how much longer the public will be able to listen to the police scanner?
Captain?
I don't have an exact timeframe. We're anticipating early this coming, 2016.
2016, okay. The man who has been blamed for the cover-up of the water quality problems in New Brunswick, endangering the public health? He was, of course, you know, took a plea deal, and he's looking at maybe three years in jail. What do you think about that? Do you think that's fair?
What do you mean?
A fair punishment for what he did to the residents of the New Brunswick Tavern, frankly?
Mr. Cradell, I mean, I can't tell you what's fair or not fair. I mean, you know, what he did was absolutely 100% wrong. You know, I'm not in the football area, you know, I can't tell you what's fair or not fair, as far as his punishment is concerned, you know. But he's certainly, according to the law, according, did he get sentenced? Was he sentenced? Was he sentenced?
I don't believe he was sentenced, I understand he, uh.
Whatever the guidelines are according to the law, he's found guilty, you know, and you know, he's, he, you know, he should be punished accordingly. That's all I can say about that.
Do you think, I was, do you think Sheriff Skakuzzo was punished appropriately? He's out now after his period of two years.
Mr. Cradville, I'm not the judge or jury on these people. Why, why are you asking me these questions? I mean, you know, let's get to something more substantial that I can help you with. Is there a curb somewhere that's not, that we can fix or somebody not paying their garbage? And I, I'm, you're asking hypothetical things.
One thing you could, one thing you could help me with.
Tell us, is there a stop sign that's fallen down? We're here, we're here about the great services that we provide here in the City of New Brunswick. What can we do to help you? Help the services in the city of New Brunswick.
One of those services is you have to be vigilant for things like what happened with the water, because you have special permission that we don't have to see documents and to do things.
We've had this discussion before. If you think anybody in this room wants anything bad to happen to the water, you're, I think you, 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 you're not right.
I am.
You're not right, you're not right, cause we all live here, I, my, my, I live here, the water's, you know, very important to us.
Okay.
I have a fish tank, the water's important to my fish.